Okay, you ready? Okay, at six thirty, we'll call the Sawyer County Board of Supervisors January twenty twenty twenty-two meeting to order, please. Madam Clerk, may we have roll call?
Dale Schleeter, Jesse Betcher, Tweed Schuman.
Here.
Stacy Hessel, Jason Weaver. Mark Helwig, Tom Duffy, Bruce Paulson, Brian Bizanet.
Here.
Chuck Van Etten, Dale Olson, Don Pettit.
Here.
Ron Kinsley, Ron Buckholz, Ed Peters.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let the record indicate we have a quorum. Certification of compliance with open meetings law, please.
This meeting has been noticed to the public and news media as required by section nineteen point eight-four of the Wisconsin statutes.
Okay, thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. Moving on to number four, then, meeting agenda. There's been a request to move, yes, sir.
On the Public Works, letter C, after public comment, please.
Okay.
It will be number nine, letter C, asked to move after public comment.
Perfect. Is that a motion, Mr. Kinsley? Motion by Mr. Kinsley, second by Mr. Buckholz. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Okay, number five, public comment. Anyone here that would like to address the board, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address, please. Anybody online? Okay, Ms. Zomer, go ahead.
Linda Zomer, nine oh two Holly Hill Lane, Birchwood, Edgewater property owner. I have two public comments. One is with regard to the agenda item on the Code of Ordinances. I sent out an email to county board supervisors today requesting that consideration be giving given to a comprehensive schedule of deposits. Because the current draft has zoning penalties and forfeitures in the general chapter. Whereas animal control and the miscellaneous penalties are in their respective chapters. And I think there are probably other penalties or forfeitures that aren't accounted for. So just a recommendation on restructuring that document before it's finalized. And then the second item is that when it comes time for the county board, if they go into closed session. Please advise those members of the public who are attending virtually how we will get back into your meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Zomer. Anyone else for public comment? If not, we'll move on to nine C. Mr. Kinsley.
At this time, I'd like to have Mr. Gary Gephardt, the Highway Commissioner, come forward, please. He has some awards to give out.
Okay. Everyone hear me? Okay. On behalf of the Sawyer County and the Wisconsin County Highway Association Leadership Development Group. I would like to present this memorial plaque to the family of Scott Mavirka for his twenty-four and a half years' service to the County Highway Department. I worked with Scott for twenty twenty-three years of his career. And the last ten years, he served as our road foreman. I relied heavily on him. He is greatly missed. And I want to just present this to you this time. Little emotional for me. I've known these boys since they were little. Sorry. Okay. Jay Sands, if you can now come forward, please. Is this thing on? Good evening, Jay. On behalf of Sawyer County and County Highway Association Leadership Development Group. I would like to present you with this plaque in recognition of thirty-one years of service with Sawyer County Highway Department. You and I worked many years together. Jay was shop foreman for twenty-five years. And he was just an integral part of our operation and I was very fortunate to work with him. Hope you're enjoying retirement, Jay. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yes, absolutely.
Congratulations to the Vera family and the Sands family. Thank you, Mr. Gephardt.
Yep. Thank you, Gary. You bet. All right, moving on then to number six. Consider approval of meeting minutes twelve sixteen twenty-one. Kinsley, motion by Mr. Kinsley, second by Mr. Duffy to approve the meeting minutes as presented. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number seven, COVID update. Julie, are you online?
Yes, I am. And I'm not going to pull a PowerPoint up as I was able to fit everything into the presentation that you already have. I'll just do an update from what I have seen over the last, or we have seen over the last week. Case rates about the same, maybe slightly higher than what we had seen prior. And you can have them up. I'm not going to go according to this slide. We're seeing positivity rates about twenty-five to thirty-five percent, which is about what we're seeing in in Wisconsin and across the nation. We're also seeing an increase in home testing, which is a positive thing as people are able to take healthcare into their own hands. And I expect to see an increase in home testing as we move on, as tests are becoming more readily available. And this will shift us in the near future from really looking at the case rates daily into more trending data. The other thing that has changed since last month is that last month, we were seeing Delta as being the predominant variant. And it was taking a toll on our healthcare systems. About mid-December, we started to see that relief in the hospitals. And by December twenty-ninth, we started to see a sharp rise in cases for COVID again. And this that was related to the Omicron variant. And although that is kind of scary to see those numbers go up so fast. There is a positive note with Omicron as we are seeing this being a much less severe for people. So our case investigators, as they talk with our residents. We're finding that people are varying from, you know, mild cold-like symptoms. Most are representing with a pretty severe sore throat. And mostly upper respiratory and into the sinuses and lots of fatigue. So the difference between Omicron and Delta is Delta really tended to hit more into the lower lungs. Which then caused pneumonia and caused respiratory distress, which which then people ended up in the hospital. The other thing that we are seeing with Omicron is because it's moving so fast, we are anticipating that we could be close to our peak. And then would start to see a shift down in cases. What we saw in New York and South Africa was it was a few weeks of a sharp incline and a few weeks of a sharp decline. And then those numbers really leveled off. So we're hopeful by mid-February, we really start to see the cases lower. And then the other change that has happened since I was here last is the isolation recommendations from CDC came out, which DHS approved. And that's five days of isolation. And if people's symptoms are resolving. They are able to just mask and be out and do their normal living. And this has caused some concern with people that they're worried that we're going to be spreading this illness even more. One thing that we do note is two days prior to having symptoms are tends to be the days that you shed the most in the first three days. And after that, it really lowers quite a bit. So with the way Omicron is presenting. This is should be a good shift for us in the future. And that is my update. Do you have any questions?
Oh, yes. Mr. Van Etten.
Real quick, I'm not quite, I don't see this reported on the news or what have you. But so when one variant takes over from the other one, then that other one's done? Or is it possible to have more than one variant at the same time?
A lot of times, we have more than one variant at the same time. Omicron has really been able to take over Delta, which has been good. What they're seeing across the nation is ninety-eight percent of what they're testing is actually Omicron rather than anything else. So it doesn't always happen that way. This just happens to be transferring much easier.
Mr. Betcher.
Yeah, hey, Julia, this is Jesse, Jesse Betcher, District Two. First of all, I just want to thank you for giving us some some positive news. Haven't really heard a lot of that in the last couple of years. So, you know, saying that Omicron is not very serious compared to the other variants. That's good news. Saying that we're we're ready to probably peak and then be in the in the downswing, that's great news. It sounds like we might actually be reaching the herd immunity that we've all we've all been hoping for. And I also want to thank you for, in the slides, I see that we have the average age of death of from COVID in Sawyer County. So I've been asking for that for a few months now. So I'm glad that we have that. It's seventy-seven point six years if if the rest of the supervisor haven't haven't seen that. And I just want to point out that the twenty-twenty average life expectancy in the U.S., according to the U.S. Vital Statistics, is seventy-seven point zero years. And according to CDC, for twenty-twenty, the average life expectancy is seventy-seven point three years. So here in Sawyer County, we're because of COVID deaths, our averages is above the national average for just life expectancy. So I think that's, you know, kind of positive, too. Not taking away from anything, you know, it's a tragedy that those fifty-two people have died. But again, they're generally, you know, older people with underlying health conditions. I think nationwide, about ninety-six percent of the COVID deaths have one or more underlying health conditions. So I think another good news story is that if you're, you know, under seventy-seven and in good health, then you have not a lot to worry about. So thanks again, Julia.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Julia? Mike, anybody online? Okay, really appreciate all you do, Julia. Thank you for the great data.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on then. Letter eight, Economic Development UW Extension Extension Committee Report. Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee met on January tenth. And they voted to support the Town of Hayward's application for a TAP grant. And these funds will be used to extend their existing bicycle and pedestrian trail to connect with Sawyer County's bicycle trail to complete the loop. There's no financial obligations on our on our part. So all they need is a letter of support. So I had so moved that we in fact give them that letter of support.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Duffy, second by Mr. Helwig to authorize the chairman to sign the twenty-twenty-two TAP grant letter of support. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Betcher.
Yeah, as I pointed out in the in the Economic Development Committee meeting, I have some reservations with this. I just think a little more, a little more research needs to be done. There could be some, you know, zoning considerations for one with with these trails and where they're going. And are they going to be over wetlands? I think it was mentioned that there's plans to go to wetlands. But one of the major concerns is how it's going to affect our motorized trails. UTV, ATV, and especially snowmobiles. Because I understand that if these trails become pedestrian, then that would be pedestrian only. And it would exclude the the snowmobile traffic. So I just, I feel like we need to do a little bit more research into what this trail system is going to entail. So I'm not in favor of signing this letter at this time.
Understand. Okay, is there any further discussion? Got a motion by Mr. Duffy, second by Mr. Helwig to approve the twenty-twenty-two TAP grant letter of support. Anybody online, Mike? Okay. If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll note that, Jesse, thank you. All right.
Okay, going on further, we received a report from the Hayward Lakes Visitor and Convention Bureau. And they gave us a report on their marketing statistics for this year. And we also had a report from the two thousand twenty-two County Fair Program. And they've announced that they're going to have a fundraiser on June eleventh at the fairground. And they're going to include in there a barn dance and live action, and all of us are invited to attend. Show off your dancing skills. And lastly, we're looking forward in the future months to receive a monthly written report from the Hayward Library Board. Who has now agreed to meet with us monthly and give us an update of what's going and what's current in the library world.
Great.
And that completes our program.
And Mr. Duffy, we also have an update from our Berkey.
I do, yeah. You know, there's there's no doubt that there's no busier place in Sawyer County this winter than the Berkey operation. And we have with us tonight, Mr. Ben Pop, who's the Executive Director of Berkey. Tell us what's new and what's the latest from the largest ski race in America. So Ben, you want to step to the front and give us an update?
Yep, please.
Good evening. How are you guys doing?
Good.
Ladies. Free to take any questions. We're excited. There should be about thirteen thousand skiers here this year. So it's really close to a record number. I think as you see in the general population, there's quite a wide variety of of concerns about COVID. From people that don't care to people that are not, they're afraid to go into a restaurant and everything in between. So we're trying to create as many opportunities for them to feel comfortable when they're here. But it should be pretty normal. The the biggest edition of this year is Wednesday. So there'll be a thousand skiers on Wednesday that'll be skiing into downtown. We've added that day and it's it's an open track event. So in other words, there's no time. You ski the course, you get credit for doing the race, but it's much more relaxed. There is no, you know, you're not trying to win the race because you can't win the race. So it's it's just in what we call an open track. The court will open on Friday along with the the Prince Oakin, which will continue as well. Normal as usual. The youth events on Thursday along with the ski drawing and the like will be on on downtown. Friday or Saturday, of course, is the biggest event on tap. They'll be finishing here with a pretty normal Berkey, as you will. There's other events that I think some people may or may not be aware of. Things that happen at the steakhouse, volunteer event, celebrations and the like that are a part of that week. So that that builds out a series of events to start as early as Wednesday morning. And then go all the way till Sunday night is the last one. So we're estimating about thirty-five thousand people. The governor is still possibly going to be here, but for sure Secretary Sayers will be with the with the Department of Tourism. And so we think it should be a pretty good celebration of getting back to a little bit of normalcy, we hope. So. The field looks to be quite strong. The U.S. Olympic team was named today. So now there is an excess of about thirty-five or so athletes that didn't make that that will likely be here as well. We're hoping Jessie Diggins, who won the Courtill Open in two thousand and eight, was on the cover of Sports Illustrated and Outside Magazine this week. There's a chance that she could be here possibly. I talked with her father this morning. The Olympics end on the twentieth. And so we're lobbying hard for that. It all depends, obviously. It is a little bit of a struggle to get out of China, actually. It takes them a little bit. So we're not sure if that'll work out. But we will have Keegan Randall here, who was the, along with Jessie, won the Olympic medal in twenty eighteen. So that's kind of the X's and O's. And I think Christie Mackey might be online if there's any technical questions about the event. But other than that, that that's what I know.
Yep. Ms. Hassel.
I just wanted to congratulate you. Jimmy Boy Edman announced today that it would be Berkey Week. So state legislation made it Berkey Week.
It is awesome. I saw that. That's fantastic.
And Ben, can you tell us, how is the trail, the condition?
Well, we were just talking, it's the trail's in actually quite a pretty good shape. The next event is at double O. It'll be the Sealy Hills Classic. There'll be about six hundred racers there, not this weekend, but next. And it's, I would say, like all the trails right now, they're good. But a couple of days of forty would not be so good. So this weather continues, it's good. But we're certainly, we'd be okay with a little more snow, for sure. But we're, actually, that is, they'll be out on Lake Hayward next week drilling holes to find out, hopefully, that we'll be able to get through there safely. But absolutely, that's the bonus of low snow cold weather. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Pop? Mike, anybody online? Okay, really appreciate you coming in and updating us.
Yeah, we'll give you the report in March, hopefully with a good thumbs up at the end of it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ben. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on then to number nine, Public Works Committee Chair Report. Mr. Kinsley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, committee, for allowing us to move the awards up. Letter B, courthouse remodel. You have the minutes of what we had. The bids are out presently and they're due back in February fourteenth. We'll be looking at the bids. Any questions?
Yeah, I do, Mr. Kinsley. Do we feel the bids are going to come in at budget, below budget? Give me some thoughts.
I'd like to tell you that I think they'll come in below budget for that. Wouldn't be telling you that's the way it's going to be.
Okay.
I don't know. We'll have to wait and see. Thank you. Letter C, certification, certified survey map of California Avenue. In the Public Works Committee meeting, will you approve this? And it has to get approved to move forward.
Okay. Then I would enter, okay, motion by Mr. Weaver, looking for a second, second by Mr. Helwig. In discussion, Mr. Schleeter.
California, is that always going to be a one-way street?
Believe it will be.
Okay, from the. Behind. To Resource Center. Words downtown. It's got the one-way home.
Oh, one way. Mr. Paul.
Did I say one lane? I meant one.
It's going to be two when they get done. Thank you.
You go to that? Okay. Is there any other discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Weaver, second by Mr. Helwig to approve the California Avenue Certified Survey Map. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Kinsley? Okay. Okay, number ten, zoning committee chair report. Mr. Buckholz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to welcome Jay back, and I'm glad to see he's doing good after his ordeal. Anyway, the zoning committee will hold its monthly public meeting tomorrow morning at eight-thirty. The committee continues to see above-average week requests as also continuing to work with through potential ordinance amendments. From a permit standpoint, the zoning department issued five hundred and twenty-one land use permits last year. This is up forty-five permits from twenty twenty. And sixteen percent increase over the last five years. Sanitary permits finished at four, four hundred and twenty-five, up ninety-nine permits from twenty twenty. And a twenty-eight percent increase over five years. These types of permit numbers have not been seen in the last fifteen years. We have one rezone case tonight. And if there's no other additional questions, Mr. Chair, I will turn it over to Jay to present.
Yes, yes, Mr. Olson.
I have to refuse myself because I voted to tell them more on this case.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, Jay?
Yeah, we have one rezone application, one rezone request here tonight. It's for Kevin Fisher and Terry and Marlene Fisher. Department of Government Lot Four, Lot One, CSM number five three nine, five three four nine. Partial ending in five four one, which is six point five four total acres, Zone Forestry One and RR One. Also, partial ending in five three oh three, which is one point two acres, which is Zone Forestry One. Purpose of the request is to rezone all the forestry-zoned property to Residential Recreational One. And then to adjust the property parcel lines to change the location of a driveway to minimize steepness. Again, with this request, the seven point eight two total acres would be zoned to RR One. With the current zone district of F one, who would not be allowed under the current zoning ordinances, thus the rezone being requested. Town of Meteor, as part of the comprehensive plan, shows the future land use maps split right in this area between forestry, future forestry and future residential. The town recommends that in that future forestry that they would maintain forty-acre parcels. However, these existing lots are already considerably less than the forty acres. And that the town comprehensive plan is for recommendation only. The Town of Meteor did approve the request on their December thirteenth town board meeting. There were four opinion letters sent out within property owners that in three hundred feet, zero were returned. Public hearing was conducted on December seventeenth. And it was recommended to approve at the county board by a vote of five-zero. Findings and facts would not be damaging to the rights or others' property values. It is consistent with the surrounding parcels.
Okay, thank you, Jay. Mr. Betcher.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Betcher, second by Ms. Hassel to approve the rezone case number two one dash zero one one. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We'll make note, Ms. Olson, upstairs. You have them in. All right, is there anything else, Mr. Buckholz?
Oh.
Jay, do you have anything else?
Staying here for the next one.
Okay. So you won't sit down. Okay. All right, thank you. All right, number eleven, Land Water Forest Resource Committee Report, Mr. Paulson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on the agenda is a resolution to adopt the decontamination ordinance. And as you can see, Jay is ready to go. He's prepped. Go to it, Jay.
Yeah, so I do have a summary. It's a little bit long, but I'll try to go through it here as quickly as possible because I know you have a lot of other stuff on the agenda. So this proposed countywide decontamination ordinance is for the prevention of aquatic invasive species, AIS. This infestation into the Sawyer County water. Um, this infestation into the Sawyer County water bodies is already here. Although numerous lakes have one or more AIS in them, not all lakes have the same AIS. More importantly, area lakes and neighboring and adjacent counties both have zebra mussels and the spiny water fleas, which are not yet known in Sawyer County lakes. This ordinance is one more tool to help the prevention of transmitting these very dangerous AIS uh, nearby. Numerous counties, including Washburn, Burnett, Ashland, and Bayfield Counties, already have a countywide decontamination ordinance um, as they too attempt to ward off further infestation. Uh, therefore, there is a certain level of responsibility to Sawyer County to also have this action in place to maintain the high-quality um, recreational and fishing water bodies that we are so now uh, well-known for in Northwest Wisconsin, and to assist preventing other further spread of AIS. This conservation ordinance has received a full legal review, and while it is a conservation ordinance, does not require official town approval. However, it was sent out to all towns and received overwhelming support with several letters of recommendation from town boards, as well as support of numerous large lake associations and the LCO Conservation Department. Uh, the Wisconsin DNR fully supports and encourages the decontamination ordinance statewide, and cost occurred with this adoption process of the ordinance uh, is grant-funded. Uh, the ordinance serves as a regulatory document that if a decontamination station is available and stocked, that it must be used to clean your vessel before entering and exiting a water body. A discussion has occurred with the Sawyer County Sheriff's Department and recreational office, uh, recreational officer uh, that they would help and assist with being the first initial contact with observations of those not using a decontamination station. And uh, that Sawyer County Zoning and Conservation would do the follow-up work and potentially go the route of citations if there was continuous little, um, continuous offenders. Uh, there was a public hearing that was presented on this at the Land, Water, Forest Resource Committee on December eighth, and was recommended unanimously for approval to the county board supervisors. Uh, can certainly help answer any questions you may have on this. I also have Jane Getting here, who is uh, part of the uh, Whitefish Lake Property Owners Association, uh, who's been very active and, and helped the majority of the drafting of this ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Jay. Mr. Olson.
I, uh, I'm fully supportive of this. I think we've needed this for quite a while. We go to other states and when you just come into the state, you have to be expected. However, uh, I would like to see a, a peroxide-based rather than a bleach-based uh, decontamination station, just because you know, when you start using bleach, problems can happen and it can also lose its efficacy over time, whereas peroxide doesn't. The other thing is, we talked about if we're gonna have an ordinance, there has to be uh, some mechanism for a fine. That's not included here, and I think it should be as part of the ordinance. So three strikes, you're out. Is it uh, twenty-five dollars, two-hundred-and-fifty?
There is a process and mechanism for the citation amounts, uh, section five of the proposed ordinance.
Okay.
Uh, first offense, a warning letter from the County Aquatic Invasive Species Coordinator in conjunction with county sheriffs to be kept unfilled for five years. Second offense, a forfeiture not less than three hundred dollars plus court costs. Third defense and subsequent, subsequent offenses of forfeiture not less than one thousand dollars and court costs.
Thank you, Jay. Mr. Bissonette, did you have your hand up?
Uh, no, I didn't. Um, but uh, we are supportive of this. Um, the, I don't think people realize the invasive species that are taking over our lakes. Uh, we've noticed a huge increase over the last three years on on some of the more prominent lakes, Big Lake Cooteray, the Flowage, uh, Little Cooteray was really bad this year. And so we absolutely support this effort.
Okay, is that a motion, Mr. Bissonette?
Sure.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Bissonette. Second by Mr. Weaver to approve the resolution to adopt Sawyer County Decontamination Ordinance. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Kinsley.
Jay, if I may ask, how are we gonna get all these decontaminations out to all the lakes?
Right, and then the ordinance is to just, you know, have that mechanism in place where if a decontamination station is available and fully stocked, then you have to use it. So then it's really kind of up to towns and/or lake associations or the DNR public boat launches if they want to install said decontamination stations. There is some money available through grant funding, and lake associations can take available or, you know, can be available to them to install these. Uh, now I think that's just the initial install cost, the recurring cost and the stocking, uh, ultimately, I think would fall on the lake association.
Okay, so I got a motion by Mr. Bissonette, second by Mr. Weaver to approve the resolution to adopt Sawyer County Decontamination Ordinance. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Letter B, Mr. Paulson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, letter B is the approval, requiring approval of the over-the-counter land sale in the town of Bass Lake.
Okay. Entertained a motion, Mr. Buckholz.
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Buckholz, second by Mr. Betcher to approve the over-the-counter land sale in the town of Bass Lake, number zero-zero-two-dash-one-zero-nine-dash-one-two-dash-three-three-zero-zero. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Letter C, sir.
Uh, the next item of business is again an over-the-counter land sale in the town of Radisson.
Okay. Enter Mr. Buckholz.
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Kinsley.
Motion by Mr. Buckholz, second by Mr. Kinsley to approve the over-the-counter land sale, Town of Radisson. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Letter D, sir.
Thank you. The last item of business is uh, approval of the twenty-twenty-two forest uh, annual plan. Uh, in essence, it hasn't changed much uh, from the twenty-twenty-one plan. Uh, approval by the county boards required so that we can get uh, funding from the state for half of the, the county foresters' salaries.
Okay, so we're at letter D. Entertained a motion to approve the Sawyer County Forestry twenty-twenty-two annual work plan. Mr. Schleter. Okay. Mr. Hellwig, second by Mr. Hellwig. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Appreciate it. Number twelve, Public Safety Committee Chair Report. Mr. Buckholz.
Mr. Chair, there's not a whole lot to report on the Public Safety Committee meeting this month. Uh, it didn't last very long unless the sheriff has anything he wants to say.
You wanna talk to our sheriff?
Okay, so that ends our report.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Buckholz. All right, number thirteen, Health and Human Services Board Chair Report. Mr. Schleter.
Okay, the monthly board meeting last Tuesday, uh, committee reports, uh, especially from Julia about COVID, she went into quite a bit of detail. It was like our quarterly report. Uh, also, we heard from Health and Human Services, Lori Perlich, that the number of guardianships being awarded to people uh, who need to have a guardian, uh, watch over their uh, property, their assets, their health, their nutrition, whatever, is really rising in this county uh, all across the uh, age spectrum. And Lori and her crew are de facto trying to uh, come up with all these guardians and satisfy all the court requirements. It's a really uphill battle. And it is going to cost more money in the future if we need to hire more uh, people or go through and conduct or encourage some sort of school to attract more people to become guardians. So, that's my report.
I agree. Thank you, Mr. Schleter. Mr. Hoff, do you care to add anything to this policy draft in front of us for action, sir?
No, I don't. This is uh, the guardianship policy for the adult protective services uh, that outlines uh, our responsibilities and is uh, available for the public as well, so they know what, what happens.
Okay, is there any budget impact with this policy? Mr. Hoff, no? Okay. So then at this time, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the Sawyer County Health and Human Services Guardianship Policy. Mr. Olson. Thank you, sir. Motion by Mr. Olson, second by Mr. Buckholz to approve the Sawyer County Health and Human Services Guardianship Policy. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Schleter, anything else? Yes, Mr. Olson. Yes, sir.
Schleter told me to remind him that we also heard from Joey Johnson, and they are in dire need of uh, meals-on-wheels drivers and assistants and whoever else we can get. So if anybody has any inclination on helping with meals-on-wheels, that would be great.
That's very true. It's, the situation is really getting critical. We have more and more people calling up and can I get a ride to the grocery store? I need to, to buy groceries for my family. Uh, can I get a ride to the doctor's appointment? And we don't have the employees. We don't have the number of buses. Joey is working with uh, transit to see if uh, that uh, service can help alleviate some of our demand. There again, they're reluctant to do so. In some cases, they've had problems because of liability issues. Uh, slips and falls on icy sidewalks and steps when they're helping somebody carry groceries up to their home. So they've had to really curtail their ability to provide those services. Anybody who would like to do, name your number, three, seven, nine, fifteen, twenty hours a week, a month of volunteering and giving something back to your community, please call the Sawyer County Senior Resource Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schleter. Thank you, Mr. Olson. All right, moving on into number fourteen, Finance Committee Chair Report. Mr. Paulson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first item of business is adjusting the budget uh, for the receipt of a TAD grant.
Okay. Mr. Kinsley? Okay, motion by Mr. Kinsley, second by Mr. Duffy, to approve the resolution authorizing increase of the criminal justice budget. And that's a positive increase, correct, Mr. Paulson?
Absolutely.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Letter B, sir.
Uh, thank you. The next item on, on the agenda is consideration of the Sawyer County Housing Authority request to use three hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funds to build two duplexes. Um, Sheila Young, uh, I'm, I'm gonna say regrettably can't be here, but she's not regretting it at all because she's in the Dominican Republic. And, but however, we've got two qualified people representing the housing authority here in, in case there are questions that I can't answer. Um, in your packet, you have a number of supporting documents for, for this request, the the summary from the Housing Authority Executive Director, financial statements, letter of support from the Economic Development Corporation, and also a summary from the two thousand eighteen, I believe, housing study. Um, Sawyer County, like most other counties in, in, actually in the rural counties in the nation, experiencing a, a substantial shortage of uh, workforce housing, senior housing, and also low-income housing. Uh, what's happened, what is happening recently is that uh, investors are buying up apartment buildings uh, and raising the rents substantially, uh, and pricing out uh, the normal citizens of Sawyer County. Also builders, uh, they can make a lot more money building high, high-cost homes rather than building uh, workforce housing. The, the Housing Authority intends to uh, build these two duplexes, which are gonna cost three hundred and sixty thousand dollars each. They'll build it on the land they already own on Highway twenty-seven South. Uh, without the county funding, this project wouldn't go ahead. They just can't afford to uh, to do it. Uh, and rents are anticipated to be about six hundred and sixty to six hundred and seventy dollars a month. Very affordable for, for our workforce. Uh, the probable tenants in this new complex would be uh, teachers who just graduated from college, nurses, uh, other people in, in the health services, retirees, and just about anybody else who wants to relocate to Sawyer County. Uh, I think it's common knowledge that the school district, uh, the essential, the hospitals, uh, cannot acquire new people, find new people, recruit new people, because these people can't find affordable housing. So I'm encouraging you to approve the resolution to use three hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funds for building these two duplexes.
Okay. Uh, would either of you two ladies from the Housing Authority wanna speak or say anything? Thank you. Okay, Mr. Hellwig.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Hellwig. Mr. Buckholz.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Hellwig, second by Mr. Buckholz to approve the authorizing use of ARPA funds, three hundred thousand, to the Sawyer County Housing Authority to build two duplexes. Correct? In discussion, um, what's the total amount then? You said each duplex costs?
Each duplex costs three hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, so where's the rest of the money coming from? Housing Authority?
The, the Housing Authority will contribute five hundred, fifty thousand dollars. Uh, and the rest of the funds will be borrowed from a local bank, probably Chippewa Valley Bank.
Okay. Could, Ms. Hassel.
Could you clarify, is that USDA covering the fifty thousand dollars or the housing? Because it's different.
It's really the Housing Authority's money. Uh, they've got permission from HUD uh, to spend this money on this investment.
Okay, Mr. Betcher.
Uh, yeah, so that was my first part of the question. My second part is, I know that you have some uh, some estimates, but do you have any guarantee that these contractors would actually be able to complete the work? I know there's a workforce shortage and stuff like that. So would do you have somebody available that can actually build these duplexes?
Yes, we, we have a, we had, had two bids. Uh, the bid that we would like to accept is from Yoder, Josh Yoder of Construction. Uh, he expects to be able to start September of this year. Uh, he's the one that built the other duplex, uh, that would be the adjoining duplexes.
Okay. And in discussion, Mr. Hoff, is this an allowable expense for ARPA funds now that the final rule is out?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right. I have a motion by Mr. Hellwig, second by Mr. Buckholz to approve the use of three hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funds for the Sawyer County Housing Authority to build two duplexes. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Paulson, anything else?
That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. All right, letter fifteen, Munich Code codification update. Mr. Hoff.
Thank you. Yes, we've been talking about this uh, the last couple of months. This is the uh, project to uh, codify the uh, ordinances that have been adopted by Sawyer County over the years. Um, we've uh, had that on the agenda for each of the committee meetings that we've had uh, last month or this month as well. Um, however, uh, we had some minor changes suggested by the Health Department. We submitted those into Munich Code and haven't received um, those proofs back. So I, I would prefer that you did not take action on this this evening um, until we get those proofs back, and then we'll, we'll make sure that um, you get those updates and um, have a chance to review those before uh, you have any action uh, taken on this.
Good. Any questions for Mr. Hoff on the Munich Code codification update? All right. If not, number sixteen, County Administrator's Report.
Thank you. I did uh, prepare a report for the admin uh, committee, and I, I didn't get attached to this agenda, but I'll, I'll get that on there for posterity. Uh, just a couple of things, as we just mentioned, the uh, uh, final rules for the ARPA expenditures uh, came out on January sixth. Um, it's a little over four hundred pages of information on how we need to uh, spend those funds. The good rule, or the good news is that the rule, the final rule does contain a provision um, that we can use standard deduction for uh, revenue loss of up to ten million dollars. Obviously, uh, this county received three point two million allocation, which means Obviously, this county received 3.2 million allocation, which means we could take all of that 3.2 million and it qualifies as revenue loss as the standard deduction. What does that mean? Well, we, you recall that previously, we talked about, there was a formula that you had to use in order to calculate the lost revenue due to the pandemic. So there was a formula created by the Treasury that said, you know, you take a look at your previous year's history, compare that to what you should have received had this been a normal year, and if there was any lost revenue, you could claim that lost revenue and then spend those funds on any general government service. They had a comment period that was, you know, what was happening between when the interim rules came out and when the final rule came out. A lot of comment from governments about the complexity and the reporting requirements due to that limitation. So the Treasury listened to those comments and in the final rule did allow this standard deduction. So that means that the, the ARPA funds that we have can be used more flexible. It allows more flexibility in what we can spend those dollars on. For example, road building and maintenance or other infrastructure, general government administration, administrative facilities, police and other safety vehicles, including like ambulances. So it does allow us to do that. Some of those items were not eligible under the interim rules, but it, they are under the final rule. So as we develop a plan for the use of the remainder of those funds, it'll be a little bit more advantageous for the county to use those funds for other tangible assets rather than what did not qualify under the interim rule. Just another word on courthouse renovation, we'll have potential contractors do a walkthrough next Wednesday at noon. Set up through Myron Construction, they'll be leading that to give potential bidders a chance to view our facility so that they can bid accordingly. So that'll be helpful. Again, as Mr. Kinsley stated, those bid documents are out, and so people are trying to calculate, you know, what the, what it's gonna cost for each of those areas to do the work in our facility. So we should be seeing that information back for the February meeting. Also, working with the bond agency to prepare for the issuance of the bonds that will pay for the construction, so that work is underway. We've got a meeting scheduled with Moody's. We've gotta do a ratings call with them that establishes our bond rating so that when the bids go out for those bonds, people will know how reputable and financially stable we are. The opioid settlement, we did get our information in on time. The rest of Wisconsin got their information in on time. Some areas around the country weren't able to meet the deadline, so they did extend that deadline. But we're still expecting to see funds dispersed to the county, hopefully by May with a second payment in July of this year and then annually thereafter. So, still don't know the dollar amounts until they get all of that information put together and cranked through their allocation formula, but at least it's, it's still rolling along. In other news, any questions?
When you say annually thereafter, how many more years annually?
There was two different settlements. There were multi-year settlements, and I, I think one, I, I can't say exactly, but they were, one was like five years and the other was in the teens, I think. But it depends on, it might be front loaded so that we get more of the money upfront, and then it may taper off in the end. So again, we haven't seen the exact calculation of that, but we hope to see that within the next couple of months here.
Will there be restrictions on the spending of that money?
Yes, that's another whole set of rules that, because of the settlement, you know, these, these providers said, okay, you know, we've got a chunk of money that we will give you to remediate this problem that we caused. And so there is a set of rules that we'll have to go by. And so we've been talking with, you know, Julia and the Health Department and, and our CJCC meetings potentially about how we're going to address that. Okay, other questions on that so far? One other item, I did receive a letter yesterday from the law firm of Von Briesen. And so this letter states that they are writing to let us know that Andrew Phillips has decided to leave Von Briesen and Roper on January 21st tomorrow. He's creating a new firm and taking some of the Von Briesen people with him. And in other news, Rebecca Roker is leaving Von Briesen as well to go back to Wisconsin Department of Transportation. So she'll be leaving our services as well. We had reported previously that TJ Duffy has taken the position or is taking the position of Family Court Commissioner, so that may limit some of the activity he can do in certain areas, but he is still going to work in some of the other areas that he has worked for us in the past. So we've got a few things that we have been working with Von Briesen on, like the, the labor agreements and some other things. And so we've got the option of continuing on with Von Briesen or switching to the company that Andrew Phillips is creating or do something different. So this news came out yesterday, so we're still kind of going through the process of that, so. Thank you for the services that you've provided, Rebecca Roker, in getting us squared away over the, the last several months and years. Seems like a lifetime, but thank you again.
Yeah. Rebecca, when is your last day then?
Wow, see where you started?
They didn't wanna work with you.
I know, right? Okay, I do have a question on the ARPA funds, Tom. How much of the 3.2 million have we obligated and what have we actually spent thus far? I didn't mean to shock you.
Mike Keefe would be happy to answer that question, our star accountant.
Because we've done some broadband, correct, Bruce? And now we've done for Sawyer County Housing, what is, what's left?
So we, we received our first half allocation, 1.6 million, I think, last May. We have committed a little bit over a million dollars to date, so we have approximately 560,000 remaining that's uncommitted of the first 1.6, and we'll receive the second 1.6, I think, in the May timeframe.
Okay. And the final rule allows us to spend it. Nowhere near as restrictive as we thought, correct?
It does provide more flexibility, and we'll be talking more about that at the next Finance Committee as well. It's, that's another bunch of information to sift through, but it's, it's good news for us.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Mike. Okay, any other questions, comments for Mr. Hoff?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, Jesse, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just regarding the, the legal counsel, I mean, since Rebecca's leaving, she said, I mean, it sounds like before the next meeting, so is it up to you, Mr. Hoff, or is it up to the chair on if, on who we go with in the future for legal counsel? I mean, otherwise, it's gonna be, you know, inabeyance, and we're gonna have no counsel.
Yeah, so we, we do contract with legal services like Von Briesen in the past, so we can, we can contract with a law firm if we need to for different things based on experience and expertise. The, the corp counsel, the official corporation counsel for the county, still working with Mr. TJ Duffy on that. If, if he takes this Family Court Commissioner position, then he may not be able to be the corporation counsel. So the corporation counsel, I believe, has to be approved by the county board. So if we do need a new one, that official corporation counsel for the county needs board approval, is that correct?
Does that, does that answer, Mr. Betcher? Okay, thank you. All right, if not, thank you, Mr. Hoff. Moving on, then the number 17, Ad hoc Recruitment Committee Update, Mr. Kinsley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This body board put together an ad hoc committee to find a replacement for Mr. Hoff, so we've taken steps to get that started. We need to go to letter B.
Okay. Entertain a motion then to go into closed session per Wisconsin statute 19.851(c) to consider employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Mr. Duffy?
I will move.
Okay, motion by Mr. Duffy, second by Mr. Buckholz, to approve going into closed session. Madam Clerk, may we have roll call vote?
Dale Schleter?
Yes.
Jesse Betcher?
Yes.
Pete Julman?
Yes.
Stacy Hessel?
Yes.
Mr. Leeder?
Yes.
Mark Hellwick?
Yes.
Tom Duffy?
Yes.
Ruth Paulson?
Yes.
Bissonette?
Yes.
Chuck Van Etten?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Cuttitt?
Yes.
Mr. Buckholz?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, and I will notify the public.